Good evening and welcome to Oyster River Cooperative School District School Board Candidates Night. What we have, I'm Bill Leslie, I'm also your school district clerk here in Oyster River. And tonight, we're gonna run one hour and a half, and each candidate will have an opportunity to give a two-minute opening statement, followed by response to questions, several questions with a one-minute response time for each, followed by one-minute closing statement. So, I have some questions that were sent in the district over the past week, I'll ask some of those. If anyone has a question here out in the audience, feel free to step up to the podium, and I'll recognize you at that time. And if you have a question you'd like asked, but you really don't feel comfortable asking it, there's some paper on the end of the stage, as well as a pen, just write it down, and feel free to just walk up and, or actually just leave it, leave it there, and I'll grab it when I see, when I see someone write one down. So, we'll get started. What we're gonna do is, we'll start with, let me get your names written down here. We got Al, and we got Edwin from Madbury. Al's running for the Durham seat, he's running unopposed. Edwin's running for the Madbury seat, and we have Jim Catch running for the Madbury seat, Henry running for the Lee, and we have Maria, is it? Maria? Maria for the Lee seat as well, and, I'm sorry, Tom? Tom is running for the at-large, and Peter's also running for the at-large. What I'll do is, I'll, we'll start with Al, and we'll work our way down the table, and then Edwin would start on the next round, and we'll just keep working our way down. And usually, every year, I mess up, and I've asked the candidates here to just let me know. So, we'll, we'll get started. Al, we'll start with you, a two-minute opening statement, basically why, why you're here.
My name's Al Holland. I moved here from Chicago in 1998. My wife Janet Perkins took a job in Dover, and that's what brought us here. I have three kids in the district currently, one in an elementary school, one in the middle school, and one at the high school. Before I moved to Durham, I actually was a high school teacher teaching science, and had a real emphasis on building enrichment programs. It included a summer astronomy program, timely as it is now, a sustainability grant where we worked on the energy audit of the school, and also rebuilding the cross-country program. Since I've been in Durham, I've actually been a stay-at-home dad, and as my kids have gotten older, I've had an opportunity to do a lot of volunteering in the schools. This year, I do a shift at the library at Moheramit. I've also adopted the poorly disguised superhero Captain Balance, where I've helped Andrea Tran with introducing the vegetable of the month at the school, as well as Tracy Schrader working with nutrition programs with the first and second graders. And finally, I help with a bunch of great people run the Oyster River Middle School Ski Program. We've taken 193 kids to King Pine five times with one more to go. My interest in the schools is I think Oyster River is an excellent district with great schools, it just needs someone to kind of tie everything together. And I'm looking forward to working with the superintendent if I'm elected, and trying to get us to move in a more positive direction. And I look forward to answering your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Edwin?
Hello, my name's Ed Charle, and I'm a family practitioner, currently working in Summersworth, actually, and I've been working there since I moved to the seacoast in 1987. My wife and I moved to Madbury two years ago, and, and I've been interested in getting involved in the community here in Madbury. My children didn't go to Oyster River School, we lived in Summersworth, but I have a very strong interest in education, and in general, I think that a lot of my experience and education has taught me to be able to deliberate through difficult problems, work with different members of the community, and help make fair and reasonable decisions. So, I'm very excited about this opportunity to be on the school board. I have experience working with medical communities, I've been on school, on, excuse me, on hospital boards, worked as chairman of the board at Frisbee for a stint, and have also served on boards for visiting nurses, so I've had some experience with political dealings and working with board members. And I'm just very excited about learning more of Oyster River. I've spent a lot of time, my time, meeting teachers, meeting administrators, and learning about the aspects of Oyster River, and problems, and, and strengths, and hopefully, we'll be busy working to keep, keep the excellence of Oyster River out there as a goal. Thanks.
Thank you, Ed. Jim?
My name is Jim Catch. I've lived in Madbury for 14 years, and I'm a former IT technician, musician, and a proud UNH graduate who happened to play football for the Wildcats. I was a soccer coach, active in ORYAA, the Phantoms, and the different youth soccer, indoor soccer leagues. I seek reelection for the school board because I believe in supporting the important work the district has already begun. So, how do we achieve fiscal and educational excellence? The first thing we have to do is to get our fiscal house in order. This includes facilities, transportation, technology, special education, and food services. How else? Ensuring the implementation of a district strategic plan. And lastly, hiring a visionary leader. I was very fortunate and excited to participate in the site visit up in Portland to see Dr. Morse, our elected incoming superintendent. He is, he is the visionary leader Oyster River needs. I'm committed to working with Dr. Morse and my fellow board members to achieve the goal of promoting all children. I also have a son who has taken a non-traditional path to success in the culinary arts, and is now working for a restaurant called Bon Ton Hampton, and cooked me a lovely birthday dinner that I probably couldn't afford to go out and eat. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Henry?
I'm Henry Brockett. I'm presently the chair of the board. I'm seeking reelection because I care about children. I've always cared about children. I've grown up in Tufton Borough and New Hampshire, built a house up there with my family, moved to California in '62, and I'm a graduate of State University, the degree in sociology. I have three children, all college educated, BA, a BS, and a master's. I have one daughter living in Lee, and two grandchildren living in Lee. I have one other grandchild lives in Boston. I moved back here, back in 2003. I've gone to numerous number of school board meetings, I tried to educate myself on the issues, and before I got elected. I have, over the last three years, since I've been on the board, we've made some big decisions. We've hired some very good people to replace very good people. We've hired a principal for the high school. We've hired a food service manager, a special ed director, and a interim superintendent along with a permanent superintendent, which I think all factions within the district enjoy, or like him very much. And I'm looking to another term on the board, with the understanding that I'm gonna try to complete some of the things that we started out working on. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Maria?
I'm Maria Barth. I raised my two sons in Durham. They are graduates of Oyster River. Then, we moved to Kittory, and I have returned to live in Lee five years ago. My background, or my education is I have a BA in American History from UNH, and a master's of Education also from UNH. I've raised my two sons. We had, we have an adopted daughter, and we raised three homeless teenagers through high school as foster children. So, in Kittory, I was elected to both town council for two terms, and to the school committee for four. And I would like to bring some of my experience to the Oyster River School District, and I'm doing this because of my grandchildren. I want to set the example of public service and be a role model for them, and I want to show the importance of education, because in my opinion, it's the foundation of everything that's American. It supports our democracy, it supports our economic system, and it supports innovation for the solutions of the problems that we face. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Tom?
I'm Tom Newkirk. I've been a Durham resident since 1987. I've taught at the University of New Hampshire since 1970, 1977, and, and at the university, I've directed the first-year writing program. I've developed the, the New Hampshire Literacy Institute, which a number of teachers from this district have taken. I've written extensively in areas of literacy and writing, and I think I could bring that experience to the board. I've experienced working with teachers, teacher development, that's what I spend my days doing, and I think I could bring that to the board, and I think, I hope that would be useful. My children all went through Oyster, the Oyster River School District, graduated, got such an excellent education that they managed to get into ridiculously overpriced selective schools, and did well there, too. So, I have great admiration and affection for the Oyster River system and the Oyster River teachers. I'd just like to make one point about my, the orientation of my work, and really, I think the orientation of my thinking for working on the district, and just my sense of where education is now, because it seems to me there's this competition between top-down models of reform and bottom-up models of reform. Top-down, enforcing standards, consistency, testing, standardized testing, in some districts where teachers have to follow scripts and do the same thing at the same pace, and absolutely no child left behind is just one insane example of that kind of thinking. Bottom-up is teacher, the innovation of teachers, and I think, if you think of Dave Irvin's, miracles he works, Martin Brewer, Nate Grove's reenactments, I think that has been what makes this district great, and I would work to create the opportunities and the climate and the culture where these things can happen.
Thank you, Tom. Peter?
My name's Peter McDonald, and most of you in Lee know me or heard of me in one way or the other. And because of the Fosters biased reporting and refusal to put my response articles in, you all have a one-sided view, so it is important for the voters to know the honest truth about me. I was declared a terrorist under the Patriot Act, under the Patriot Act by the state of New Hampshire a few years ago, to stop my opinion letters of government wrong. They took my freedom for six months before dropping the bogus charges. My volunteer work to teach in schools around New Hampshire was stopped affecting every one of our children to stop my freedom of speech. I believe that Oyster River citizens need to be willing to stand up for our constitution, and we need to set an example for our children to do this. I am a US Marine, injured four times during my tour. Three are combat-related, inflicted during two separate Vietnam offensives. I came back to the USA with no memory at all of ever being in the USA before from my TBI disability. I had to relearn every part of life from child up. I have PTSD, where anything can trigger a memory, or even just sleeping, I relive life in a different world. I believe even with my four disabilities, doing what is right for the USA is everybody's obligation. A few years ago, a Madbury family, out of the blue, called me for help with a zoning issue. I took the case to the New Hampshire Supreme Court. I am not an attorney. I dropped out of school at 17 to join the Marine Corps. The New Hampshire Supreme Court refused to hear the case of Judge Peter Faber criminally violating the Constitution to protect the Madbury, New Hampshire selectmen, using the trusted power of government to take from local residents for the selectmen's own personal gain. The documented truth was presented to the New Hampshire Supreme Court, and the New Hampshire Supreme Court refused to hear the case. I was told by police, judges, and the New Hampshire Governor Shaheen to stop writing letters of government wrongs committed by the New Hampshire Supreme Court. I did not stop, and they declared me a terrorist under the Patriot Act. The Fosters censored the truth in defiance of the safety of the public. As a school board, as a school board member, I will represent, whoops, sorry. Time's up. Show the red flag.
Great. Thank you, Peter. Okay, first question's gonna go to Ed, and it goes like this. And what we'll have is one minute to respond to each question. What do you feel are the main responsibilities of a school board member?
As I see a school board member, the goal is to promote the excellence of the school system, and, so I think that's gotta be done through combining the needs of the teachers, administration, and the community, so that everyone is working together to build a system that works best for the school board. I think that, I mean, for the school system, excuse me, I think that it's important to, the other part of the school board is working with the, doing that all within a budget, and I think that therefore it's very important for the school, school board member to be always cognizant about the cost of the different programs that are being considered, and, and is to maximize their effectiveness for the school.
Thanks. Thank you, Ed. Jim?
The school board is charged with the governance of the school district. We do that by being elected by the community. We are, in a sense, representatives of the community. We also are charged with the legislation of policies, which are founded in law under the guidance of the New Hampshire School Boards Association. None of us should or want to micromanage, and that's why I'm extremely happy that we have a chance to hire Dr. Morse, a trusted, competent, and capable administrator, to carry out the day-to-day functions of administration.
Thank you, Jim. Henry?
The duties of the school board are set down in the RSA. There's three major things, I believe. First one is the budget. They set the budget for the district. They hire the superintendent, and they set policies, because that governs the district. And I think this board that we're on now have tried to do that, they've definitely set budgets, and they've hired a new superintendent, and tried to do everything by the RSAs, even though we've been judged differently by the courts, but it's pretty hard to, to manage, to go through everything that the board is expected to do, and to do everything 100% right by the RSA. It's not a document that's spread out, that's simplified, it's very complicated document, and the board has the duty to represent all the shareholders, which include the students, the teachers, the rest of the staff, the community, and the, the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Maria?
Along with the duties that have already been mentioned of oversight of policy and fiscal responsibility, I think it's my obligation to act with civility, and openness, and transparency, and to advocate for our schools, and reach out to the community, and try to find ways of listening to everybody in a respectful and civil manner, so that the community can come back together around the schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a question I asked of all the principals when I made my tours of the schools, and I remember Dennis Harrington, you know, I asked him, what makes a good school board member? And he says, you gotta synthesize. You have to take multiple points of view, you have to go into situations without the assumption that you know the right answer, take multiple points of view, and find some kind of common ground. I think that's a temperament that we need, that you, you don't know the answer, and just, the, the school board, the school system is so complex, that the ability just to take in those multiple points of view, I also think we need to be able to say no. I think that the new school board will have to say no at some time, and make some people upset, and I think a school board that's unwilling to say no is not serving the community.
Thank you. Peter?
I think the most important part of the school board is to learn how to communicate with the students, the faculty, and the voters. And we need a school board that's gonna take all three of these opinions into consideration on every one of the decisions. But we also have to have a school board that keeps financial problems of our community in their mind when they're making the decision. We can't have a school board that just spends and doesn't consider what it's doing to the families. And as a school board member, I will listen to everybody, and I will help out wherever I can, and I will try to promote programs that don't cost so much, or finding a better way, a more efficient way of doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Al?
As a elected community member, I provide a bridge between the larger community and the schools themselves, and that is important, because it allows me to ensure that the superintendent actually hears the voices, the various voices of the community, and what they have to say. And I, I think another really important responsibility is just the evaluation of the superintendent, to ensure that he really does have a academic vision, that he's able to implement it, and that he is able to show with assessment that he's actually done it. Additionally, I'm interested in, is he able to efficiently apply our resources to our strong points and our weak points, and how well can he let that money flow across the district? Thank you.
Thank you. Ask one more question, and then we'll take a question from the audience, so if there's something you've been dying to ask, you know, feel free to make your way down to the microphone there, or write it on a piece of paper, and we'll get it asked. Okay, the next question, I'll start with Jim first. We all appreciate being respectful and respected, okay, of others' views. As, as a board member, how will you work to respect other people's opinions that may be different from your own?
I've said this before, that we have two ears and one mouth for a reason. We have to listen respectfully, and I, and I think this board has done that. There was some contention in the last budget hearing that we didn't say anything. Well, that's because we were listening. That's what we're supposed to do in that particular instance. And as far as respect is concerned, I certainly hope that in my conduct as a school board member, that I haven't disrespected anyone, and I don't intend to. Everyone has an opinion, everyone deserves to be heard, we also deserve to be heard. Thank you.
Henry?
I think that hearing the public comments on a regular basis shows that the board is respectful of differing opinions, and we have it in the, in the agenda twice, and the agenda that hear public comments. We also take letters from the public, and we read every single one of them, and we are listening at every board meeting. Even though we've got a computer in front of us, which is new, it saves on paperwork, but we do listen to every comment that's being made. And we have a, a population that sometimes doesn't respect us, but we do respect everybody that comes before us, and, thank you.
Maria?
I'm a listener. I'm a consensus builder. I'm an advocate for education. Thank you.
Tom?
I think there's, I think there's a sense of humility you need to be on the board. You need to, you need to recognize that you don't have the answer when you enter into these situations, and that you have to put together, as I said, synthesize these various opinions that come your way. It's hard to say, just to say I will respect people, but I think people who've worked with me know that I do that, that I'm a good listener, that I don't enter into a, I don't enter into a meeting just insisting that I have my way, that I'm willing to change my mind. I think that people who've worked with me will, will vouch for that, and that's what I, that's what I try to be.
Thank you. Peter?
I believe in listening so much that, at the student forum this morning, I proposed that even if I don't become a school board member, that the school board should think about making the student representative a full voting partner of the school board, because I believe that that is a way of listening, of hearing. And I believe innovative ideas like this are what's gonna make our school a better place, and teach our children responsibility, and help make the community better, and maybe bring our budget under control. Bringing fresh ideas by making everybody, including the students and the community involved, is listening, at least to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Al?
It's interesting, the district's motto is to engage every learner, and I think what's lost is just because I graduated high school a million years ago, my learning didn't stop. And so, part of that is listening to what the community has to say, and really looking for what kind of trends are developing. If there's a certain concern that I'm hearing from multiple people, that's something that clearly has to be addressed. Whether I agree with it or disagree with it, it has to be addressed and resolved. Thanks. Thank you.
Ed?
I think that, as a family practitioner, every part of my day is working with very different people, and, and that requires from myself a lot of respect for everybody's individual needs and, and opinions about their own health, which is a very sensitive issue. And I think that that respect that I show other people, I think, comes back to me, that I think I have worked hard to earn that respect, in the sense that I work with people as individuals, and learn about their problems, and help make decisions based on their own particular needs. Thanks.
Thank you, Henry. Question from the audience? Yep, we got one question. This will go to Henry first. Okay.
Hi, I'm Kenny Rotner. This year's budgeting process was kind of complicated. There was an initial budget put forth by the superintendent. After being requested, there were cuts made in the original budget, and the budget that came at the, before us at the budget hearing, had an assistant principal that was eliminated at the high school. At the budget hearing, many people spoke in favor of having that assistant principal reinstated. That didn't happen, and then at the deliberative session, there was overwhelming majority, supported amendment to the budget, and that amendment added dollar figure to the budget. Knowing that we, that the budget that eventually will be on the ballot does not specify that that assistant principal has to be returned to the school, that's going to be up to the board's discretion. But the amendment was passed with the will of the community, being that they wanted that assistant principal spot back. Asking people on the board now, and people running for the board, and certainly some people might not have all the information at this point, if you are on the board, will you add that assistant principal position back in? And I think this gets to our listening question that happened before.
Great. Thank you for that question. Henry?
The budget process is one where the board does get involved in the budget, and unfortunately, they get involved at the beginning, and they also get involved at the end. The budget is actually voted on by the board and put forth, and the deliberative session does add money or take away money. They have the right to change the budget, as was mentioned. But on, on a specific item, they don't have, the budget is, money added and the deliberative session or taken away at the deliberative session is added to the bottom line of the budget. And the positions that were recommended to be changed, they were recommended by the leadership team. Now, they happened after the fact. Now, they happened after the fact, towards the end of the process, but they did happen with the leadership team suggesting the changes. And myself, I think that we listened to the public that were at the deliberative session, which is a limited amount of voters, and they did change the budget. But the changes, like I say, fell to bottom line. They didn't fill, they didn't go to any specific line at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Maria?
I did hear the citizens that were here for the deliberative session, I did hear the high school principal speak, saying he was not in support of the high, the assistant principal being cut. But if I'm elected and there's a new superintendent, as I said before, I'm a listener, I will listen to the administrative team and decisions will be made. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I understand it, we will have to meet, the new board will meet on March 31st and probably have to decide the question that was just asked. I would support putting the assistant, assistant principal back in. I think that's the will of the people, the money was appropriated, that would allow that to happen, it's the board's decision. I think we're going to have to make that decision on the 21st and I would support the assistant principal being restored.
Thank you. Peter?
The deliberative session is an important part of the school board meetings for information. But there are also a lot of other people in the community and voters, and we have to listen to their thoughts and their wants and needs also. We have a $38 million budget. Our budget is out of control and we have to think of ways to bring it back under control. I don't know if I would bring the assistant principal back or not, because it's up to the people to decide. The majority of the people I talk to and what the students think is necessary and what the voters tell us is necessary. As a school board member, we do need to cut the budget or find a way to make it more efficient, because we can't keep having it growing like it is in a community that just can't afford it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Al?
During that whole budgetary process, I was kind of alarmed because I felt that in some ways, the budget process and the actual academic process had become separated. And that, I mean that the positions that I was asked or that are going to be asked to be decided on, really where they integrated or worked in the district itself were not clear. And so, I think, you know, when you talk about the will of the people, I think that in some ways, that is what was expressed at the deliberative session. What exactly are these positions? How are they important? It is sending a message that if you're going to make cuts or make decisions about the budget, you clearly have to know where they focus in or where they work in the overall academic picture. As for me coming in to a new board, if elected, I think that really I'd have to lean on the administrative team again. I have to ask Todd, exactly what does assistant superintendent do? Do you need him? And with the superintendent? And use their judgment to move forward. Thank you.
Ed?
I have gotten an opportunity to speak with Principal Allen and asked him about the need for an assistant principal and got a very lengthy answer, which I'm still trying to digest. But my sense is that he sees the assistant principal job as an essential part of building the whole curriculum, bringing in younger teachers who now have a five-year instead of a three-year probationary term, and that he finds that the principal and assistant principal positions are essential to making sure that process and the growth of the curriculum of the school functions smoothly. Thanks.
Great. Jim?
When we proposed a $500,000 cut, please understand that was less than one and one half percent of the total budget. Our budget is now $38 million to serve 2,000 students, which comes out to $19,000 per student. I've said it before, this is not sustainable. Cuts have to be made someplace. We gave Lee Levesque, as well as his leadership team, a figure. They in turn determined what they wanted to cut. We can no longer, we can neither take away a specific position nor add a specific position. That's not our job. That's the job of the leadership team.
Thank you, Jim. We'll take one more question from the audience and then we'll go back to some of the questions that were submitted. We are not live tonight. The reason for that is Durham owns the channel tonight, but will be broadcast Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Hi, I am Lauren Selig, I live in Durham, but I'm actually asking a question for one of the home not viewers who specifically asked me to ask this. So this is from Chrissiane Weigert. And she would like to know how you perceive the transition from elementary schools to middle schools? And what are the steps you think that could be made to help improve that transition? Just expanding on it, but for children who may have a more challenging time making that transition.
Great, and that goes to Maria first.
I'm not that familiar, not having children that age. That has always been a challenge to do the step-ups, so to speak. It's something I have to look into, something I don't know much about, and there you are.
Thank you, Tom.
I was at the presentation with the guidance, when the guidance counselors spoke about that issue. And I was impressed by the kinds of steps that are taken in terms of having kids visit, I believe, visit the middle school, get a sense of it. And I think that, I was interested, I think, how bus drivers are important in this. I think we, sometimes you think of them as just people who transport people from A to B, but I think that they also play a huge role in making students feel comfortable and as they go to a new place. I've heard this concern a lot and I've heard, and I know when the school was originally set up to be K through 4 and then to move in 5th grade, I thought that seemed like a year too early. I think it was a space issue that caused that. So I would be interested in hearing more about what these concerns are, assessing whether, what the guidance and the work that's being done now is adequate, because I've heard this a number of times about this concern about this transition. So whether, I know that a lot is being done, but whether enough is being done, I think that's something we're going to have to look into.
Peter?
If your child has an IEP or something like that, they may need assistance in integrating into a higher level of school. But it's the parent's responsibility to raise their kids and stop babying them. I mean, your children, after they get into the middle school, they're a short step from going into the military or something or starting a new life. I mean, you've got to teach your own children how to grow up. It's not the school board's thing to waste money babysitting your children so that they can go from elementary school to middle school. Thank you.
Thank you. Al?
Well, I've actually spent a lot of time over the last year in Moheramet and it's pretty amazing when you look at a kindergartner versus a 4th grader. But my observation is a lot of 4th graders, as they're approaching the end, they're ready to move on to middle school. So I think the transition of the student is less traumatic than actually the transition of the parent. And by that, I mean, Moheramet or Masway are incredibly welcoming to have you come in, work in the library, work in classrooms, help with phonics, do all kinds of things where you can connect in the school. And when you move to the middle school, those opportunities are less. I mean, yes, I've been able to do stuff with the ski club and my wife does Kids Who Care, but for a lot of parents, you're letting your kid go and you're not as actively engaged and that's a concern. And I think that what needs to be addressed besides the child's transition is your transition. How can we actively engage you in the school, use your talents to work with coaching, enrichment, and other internships that provide a way to bridge you to the school? Thanks.
Ed?
This is not a subject I'm well-versed on, so I am not really sure I can give a very comprehensive answer. I do know, I understand that there's, in the process of trying to make the Mas and Moheramet School curriculums similar, and in some ways they're not, so, and at least this way will give teachers in the middle school a better understanding of what to expect from the children from each of those middle, elementary schools, once they do get to middle school. Thanks.
Jim?
I think there's a spectrum or a curve of development that takes place from the very beginning where kids start the elementary school. And some kids are not ready for elementary school, that's why they have readiness programs. The same could be said about students who suddenly are thrust into the middle school in the 5th grade. Are they ready? Are they ready in the 6th grade? When are they ready for high school? It's, you can't answer that because every child develops differently. So we hold back a child when they're too young for elementary school, but we push them right ahead and we try and accelerate them as they advance in grades. Is that, is that right? The middle school concept was designed to make the transition smoother, but we still have a problem without a junior high school to prepare kids effectively for high school. It's a huge leap for a lot of kids.
We have a program in place where Jay Rashad, the principal of the middle school, invites the 4th graders to come over and visit with their, with the teachers and the administrators at the middle school. And I think it's a program that's been around for a couple of years, maybe even before I was on the board, where they started trying to make the transition from 4th to 5th grade easy for the kids. And it's been very successful. The teachers at the middle school like, seem to like the program very much. And I know the parents of the 4th graders like the idea of being educated on what to expect at the middle school. And it's, it's something that I think that they're going to continue and it's been very successful and it will continue to be, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Okay, this question goes to Tom first. What are three areas you feel Oyster River could improve on as a district?
Three areas? I'll start with one obvious one where we have to do work, which is, you know, this building. You know, given the fact that the report that we all probably saw in the news or saw and was given to the board last time. I think that one thing we have to think about is teacher development and how to make great teachers greater, good teachers better. I'm not sure that we, the system now for teacher development, as I understand it, is as effective as it might be. I'd like to take a look at that. Do teachers see other teachers? What kind of coaching goes on for experienced teachers? That's one area that I would, I would like to look at. Third, I can't think of the third one right now, so those would be two I'd say.
Thank you. Peter?
I think communication is the first thing. We've got to learn how to talk with our students and we've got to learn how to talk with the public and community. And the school, that's what the school board has to do. There's a lack of communication, I think. I think the school board right now is on a tangent on their own. I think another thing we have to do is we have to find ways to bring our budget under control. Like I said, I think $38 million is out of control and going up every year. And I think that's an important part. And also, I think we've got to find integrative ways to bring different businesses or other things in to help subsidize the school budget so that we can bring new ideas into the school for our students to learn from. That's my ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Well, I'll start and steal his first one as well, it's communication. And it's kind of a paradox because with Twitter and Facebook and email, you can be contacted anywhere in the world continuously, and yet we're still unable to address basic problems that we have. And so that brings me to number two, which is parental engagement. The way you learn about the schools is bringing parents and community members into the school so they can see what happens there, they can build a bond with the school, and that allows them to understand what goes on and to raise good questions about it. The third was brought up in the last question with just the 4th, the 5th transition. But it's not just the 4th, the 5th transition that's really important, it's the getting into 1st grade, it's going from, I can tell you it's really difficult, 8th to high school, and then the last is going from the high school to college. And each one of those transition points really brings a great deal of anxiety and concern from parents, and we really need to focus in on those and ensuring that your concerns are met and resolved. Thanks.
Ed?
There's, there's a lot going on at the moment, building a stronger curriculum at the school, and I've heard bits and pieces of that, but it all sounds very exciting. Mostly, what I've learned about is at the high school, but I know it starts much earlier in the elementary school. I think I agree with other comments that effective communication is very important. I think that it's essential to keep the community up to speed with what's going, with what's going on with the board and the district. And I think that also means keeping the board involved with the teachers and meeting with students as well and keeping dialogue open. Thank you.
One area that's come to light very recently is the condition of our facilities. It appears that this building that we're in right now was never finished. Little things like roof flashing. This was all brought out in the energy report and the facilities report that we received. It's something that we need to act on immediately. We've taken almost a quarter of a million dollars from the building, from the Capital Improvement Trust Fund and applied it to correct at least the heating systems that are not functioning well. The other thing that we have is we have to practice a general economy and a frugality in all our student services. And that includes busing, food services, special ed. We've got to find ways from within to cut costs. And lastly, your teachers are your most valuable asset here. 75% or 57% of your teachers are at their top step. They are pros at their game, they've been around doing it for a long time. That's where the ideas have to come, from the bottom up. That will make a good school system.
Can you repeat the question again? I would have to have the person that read the question come on back up and repeat the question. Oh. Hey, there you go. That's right. I am paying attention. What are three areas you feel Oyster River could improve on as a district?
Number one is, I think, teacher education, ongoing education. I think that the passwords under Joanne Pudalupi's tutelage and Jennifer Reeves' tutelage set things in motion. I think we've carried forth with the, we give a lot of money towards and a lot of thought on training teachers and presenting new ideas to teachers, and I think we should continue with that. We also have reports on the buildings and on energy that pointed out real problems that we have to address. And I think we need to address one big thing, and that's the lower enrollment that's coming about in the, in the elementary schools and also in the, from the 9th to the 10th, 10th, excuse me, from the 8th to the 10th, 9th grade. The enrollment is dropping and I think that that's going to impact the district quite a bit. Thank you.
Sounds like almost everything has been addressed. I think we need to fix our reputation. This is a great system, it has great students, my grandchildren among them, and great teachers and a great community, but people are leaving the system. Administrators are leaving. And I know, because I've heard it, that the reputation of Oyster River is one of discontent and we need to change that. I asked my grandchildren, they said, "How about the school lunches?" And if that's the worst thing, we're in good shape. I think we're all a great system, but as anything and everybody, we can all improve. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, this next question, right here in this piece of paper, I'll read to Peter. If you are elected to the school board, please tell us the ways in which you will support the mission and values of the Oyster River Cooperative School District Sustainability Committee. Committee.
I'm not really familiar with the Oyster River statisti- whatever the word is, can't pronounce it. Um, so it's very hard for me to answer that question. Um, I believe in promoting education, so that's really all I can say about it. And that's why I'm here, is to be an active member of the community. So I'll have to pass on that question.
Thank you, Peter. Al?
Um, I think the, the sustainability setup really provides us with a hook to bring our community together. And by that me, I mean, we are desperately in need of things that we, as a community, can all work on together. And this is a great example. So, for example, coming up in the spring, let's build those gar- raised bed gardens and get them going. And then try to get a crop in, if we can, by the spring. If not, by the fall. Bring those into the kitchens and let the kids see, like, how do we process it? How does that made into a meal? Yeah, look at nothing more than our school. Why aren't our kids involved in working on, why do we have, like, bad ventilation? Why do we spend so much money? Bring them in to work with it. With the idling, I guess, is the next thing. How can we work on that? So I, I just think that overall, the sustainability goals just provide us a community building opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you, Al. Ed?
Um, yeah, I was very pleased to hear about the sustainability program going on, and understand that already the school's district has saved a considerable amount of money, even though there were flaws found in the building. But overall, there's, have been a lot of ability to make the building much more energy efficient, and therefore reduce a lot of long, long-term costs. I'm also, um, would be excited about seeing more use of sustainable agriculture in the local area and using that in the schools as well. I think that would be another program to look into. Jim?
It's kind of a hot button. Sustainability is a word that, that, that everybody embraces, but there are things that, that we have to look at a little bit closely. First, in order for it to be sustainable, it has to be fiscally and economically sustainable. Our budget isn't, for example. I, I would certainly support outreach and education in children. I'm not so sure that the taxpayers of this community are willing to subsidize local farm efforts. I think it's a wonderful idea. I buy my eggs from a lady that's got a couple of pet horses down the street. The other thing is that the energy replacement, biodiesel fuels, fine. Are they proven? Do the new biodiesel fuels not require extended maintenance on engines? Do they get as much mileage as regular diesel fuel? And lastly, before we start putting up solar panels and heat tubes, I suggest we take a good look at this envelope, this building. And that's what the energy audit is about, and that's what we're proceeding on first. Thank you.
Thank you. Henry?
The Sustainability Committee was formed this past year, and we've had a board member sit on that committee, and we've had reports on what the committee does and what it's looking at. And I think that the community likes the idea of having a sustainability committee. I think they like the idea that we're looking at the things that would be cost-effective, that would save natural resources, and also make a better environment. I support the efforts by Paul, which is in our audience tonight. I think his group has put together some good ideas. I don't think every single one of them would, would necessarily be the best, but I do believe that a lot of them would be. And I think that the using food locally grown helps the communities, but it also helps the students think about sustainability and trying to have food delivered closer to the schools than, than have it shipped from South America or wherever we get long-distance food from.
Thank you, Henry. Maria?
I'm a late-in-life, sustainable farmer. I'm part of the eat local, I'm part of the sustainable food in the area. So I'm very excited about this, uh, committee. I do agree with Mr. Katch that sometimes it does not make economic sense, but I think it makes a great educational sense. And there's more to it. There's the waste stream, just for kids, and for all of us to become aware of our waste stream. And obviously, the energy in this building, which was shocking to me when they made the presentation, at the wastefulness that, that's going on, and that has to be addressed. And they're talking about, oops. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Thank you. Tom?
I just have one thing to add. I certainly support the efforts of that committee, and I was very impressed by Paul's presentation at the deliberative session. I also think that sustainability is such a, an important area of work at the University of New Hampshire, that it's a great opportunity for collaboration between the Sustainability Program that Tom Kelly has, you know, set up, that's gotten national attention at the university and the school system. So I think there's certain possibilities there that I'm sure are being realized, you know, with this committee already, but I think there's, there's even probably more that could be done to, to build that bridge.
Thank you. This question's from the audience, and it goes to Al first. Thank you. Do you support the selection of Dr. Morris?
Uh, well, first of all, I've, my entire exposure to Dr. Morris came in one hour at the, at the high school forum. And what really struck me about him, and what really interests me as an educator, is that he's someone that became disengaged. He, he dropped out of school, and yet he was able to reengage and become successful, and is now a superintendent. And to me, that's an incredibly powerful tool. It's something that gives him something in his belt to work with our kids. Because when a kid becomes disengaged, they become a disciplinary problem, they eat up a lot of resources, and it, it's just very difficult to get them to reengage. So someone who has that experience intrigues me greatly. I have not done the site visit as others have done, and I have not had full exposure to anything else, but from what I've seen, I really like him. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed?
Um, I've, I have not met Dr. Morris. I've learned about him through, from Dennis Harrington, the principal, who is very enthusiastic, and, and just having him talk about Dr. Morris makes me enthusiastic about him, too. So that's, don't know much more than that.
Jim?
I was fortunate in that I went on the site visit along with Jay Rashad, Dennis Harrington, Susan Caswell, our business administrator, along with two teachers who I met for the first time, or shall I say, reacquainted myself, Alida Carter and Dave Hawley. We spoke with, this is the meeting we had set up, I'll do very quickly this. We met with the school nurse, we met with several teachers, we met with a teacher leader. They have a school up there without principals. The teachers run the school. He'll explain to you how he does that. We met with the CFO of the, of the school district, the budget manager, the student, director of student support services. I went with a couple of school board members. I met with the fire chief, the assistant city manager, the director of Parks and Recreation, the director of Public Works, the CEO of the Portland School System, and every one of them. I tried to find things wrong with Dr. Morris, and I couldn't. I am enthusiastically in favoring of, of his hiring, as soon as we, as soon as possible.
Thank you. Henry?
Um, I'm in favor of Dr. Morris. We went through an extensive search. We had, brought in a consultant to help us formulate a search committee, and we tried to make the search committee representative of the community. We had teachers that chose teachers to be on the search committee, we had administrators. They chose administrators to be on the committee. And the, the makeup of the committee that chose, that over, over three, over 12 or so, applications, ended up with Dr. Morris. So I thought it was a fair and equitable choice. I think that he's demonstrated, my discussions with him, that he's, he's an innovator. I think that he's going to be good for the district. I think this district needs a leader that has some vision. And I think that he's schooled and at the right level. He's a doctorate of education, and I think that everybody in the district will enjoy him being here.
Thank you, Henry. Maria?
I went to the forum at, here at the high school, and I did hear his interview with the board. And I was impressed with him. I liked him. Obviously, not privy to the site visit. I have checked with some friends who, in Maine, who knows all the superintendents, I'm sure, and got good recommendations. So, thank you.
I would also support, support the selection of Dr. Morris. I thought he was clearly the most impressive candidate that brought, was brought in. I think the search itself had a fairly thin pool to draw from, and I think there's some uncertainty about the board about doing that site visit. But, but I think he's clearly, he's, you know, engaging. I think his, his life story, his willingness to work with students who are not, don't fit the traditional mold, you know, is very impressive, and so I would look forward to working with him. Thank you, Peter.
I have never met the man, so I really can't say what I think of him until he starts working. I'm very proud of the school board's process in picking him, although I think their secrecy and some of the things that they did in the process wasn't quite right, but I think they did pick the right person. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question goes to Ed. Please list, a brief list, your top three goals that you will work to accomplish during your term.
Um, I, I think the, the top, the top of the three is, three things, did you say? Or just, three things? Oh, phew. Is to work within a, to help build an effective school board. I think there's been a lot of disruption within the school board, and that's also between members of the community, which, and I think that my first goal would be help to try to heal some of that and work as a, a member of the, of the board that listens to all sides and weighs matters carefully. I think that the other harder, bigger things to do are going to be, take some time to learn about the needs of the district and work with the administration to understand how the curriculum can be improved and administrat- administration can work more smoothly and function to develop an excellent education for our kids. And I think the, the third thing would be to make sure that this is all done as mu- as much as possible within an effective, within an effective and low bu- low budget as possible.
Thank you. Jim?
I'd just like to recount some of the things that have happened already. We're reviewing the technology plan. We're trying to slow it down a little bit, just because of financial constraints. We supported the new initiatives in special education to increase achievement. We contributed a comprehensive policy direction to serve Oyster River. We did promote budgetary transparency, and that is probably due to the hiring of Susan Caswell and Lee Levesque. We voted to elect a district superintendent, a high school principal, and a curriculum director. We initiated the district's transfinder report for transportation efficiency, and we provided benchmark data for food services. All of this done, yeah, in the face of certain distractions. But this board in and of itself functions well. It's from without that we have some problems. And hopefully, we'll come to terms with that and resolve those issues, and finally work together as a community. I would look very much forward to that.
Henry?
I agree with what Jim just said. I think that we're going to continue doing some of the good things that we've already started, and, and going to continue with training of teachers, exposing teachers to new ideas. I think that we've got students that are very, very willing to take challenges, and I think we need to, to up the challenges for the students in the, in the class curriculum. And I think that the parents, we need to get more parents involved where we can. And I would like to see that as a goal of the school district.
Maria?
I come with no particular agenda. I come to learn, to listen, and to make things work smoothly, and get the, the communication with all factions of this community, so that we can fulfill the school motto, which is working together to engage every learner that's working together, you and me. Thank you.
I think we need to work to regain the confidence of the community. I hate to be negative here, but I do believe that the school board has lost the confidence of the community, and I think we have to work to regain that. So I think that's number one. I think, two, I think there needs to be some long-range planning, and some of that has been mentioned earlier, that we will have a declining population in the elementary school. And I think we have to kind of anticipate how we're going to deal with that, just to assume that you can continue the staffing at the same level with a declining population. I just think that won't wash, and we're going to have to figure out and plan and have the leadership team plan how that's going to happen. And finally, I think this, here I am in agreement with the people in the board who've spoken. We need to work with the superintendent. I think a, a committee's only as good as the superintendent it works with, and it's only as good as the relationship that it has with that superintendent. So I look, you know, if elected, I would look, look forward to working with him, getting to know him, getting to know his values, and working as a team with him.
Thank you. Peter?
I think we should have better involvement with the students in the school board. Like I was saying earlier, maybe we should put a student on the school board with full rights. I mean, the students should learn how to take responsibility for their lives by working with the school board. I think, as all the other members here have said, the relationship with the community in the school board needs work. And I think that that is a major problem right now in the Oyster River School District, is the school board. And the other thing is, I think that I would like to see people think about the budget and try to think of ways of either lowering the budget or finding different ways to supplement it by bringing in outside financing or something. Those are my three things that I would like to see.
Thank you, Peter. Al?
Uh, I'm going to steal Tom's to start off with, which is getting to know the superintendent and forming a working relationship with the superintendent. It's going to be critical moving forward, that we're on the same page, and that we establish trust between ourselves. Second is improving dialogue between students, community members. Every time we seem to get together, it's always a monologue. I know you, you give me a question, and I get to respond to it, but there's really no dialogue occurring. And that's going to be really critical moving forward. And then the third is getting to know our academics. And by that I mean aligning our budget with our academic programs, and then facing what is the thorniest issue, which is assessment. How do we know that we're doing well? And since we're being mandated with No Child Left Behind, and Race the Top, and Core, whatever's coming around, we need to figure out how we can show that we do something well. And I don't think we're there yet, and that's going to become an incredibly, incredibly thorny issue that we're going to have to get on the front of. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. The next two questions will come from the audience. One right there, then I'll, I'll read one here.
Thank you. My name's Phil Eisenberg. I live in Durham. And my questions mostly address to Mr. Brackett and Mr. Katch, but I wouldn't mind hearing what the rest of you would respond to this as well. The current school board has been judged to have been broken the law for the manner in which it failed to communicate its policies and deliberations to the public. I have sort of two related questions. First, for Mr.'s Katch and Brackett, as a member of that school board, do you acknowledge that, that board broke the law? And secondly, for pretty much everybody, if you are elected to the board, what changes would you like to see to ensure that this illegal action does not continue?
So we'll start with Jim, and everyone will get a chance to respond to that question.
You want to start?
Yeah.
Something you should realize is that both of these cases are still live. And I probably shouldn't comment on them. Simple as that. The plaintiff has appealed the judgment he won. won. And when the judges come with their decision, we've requ- we requested an expedited decision, but it has not yet been forthcoming. And when it comes, when the judge makes a final decision, we should be happy to explain it.
Thank you, Jim. Henry?
Well, the judge made a, an error, I think, and I'm not judge, I'm not a qu- lawyer, but she cited a case law that we violated that came after the time that we supposedly didn't have done this violation. So that's an issue. But the court, the court cases are still live. There's, David's made an appeal on the first one and that's lengthened the, the decision out. And on the second one, the court has not made a ruling yet. And the reason we did some of the things we did was because we were getting attorney, we had an attorney that gave us permission to do what we did. And we had a big confidentiality agreement with the past superintendent, so we couldn't do certain things. And like I say, the case is still alive, so we can't go any further than that.
Thank you, Henry. Maria?
Excuse me, would either of you like to comment?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Would either of you like to comment about the second part of the question, what you would change if reelected to, to ensure that the legalities do not continue?
Hire a better lawyer.
Henry?
No, in all seriousness, may I, that was a bit of levity. We followed the directions of our consultant. We followed the directions of the New Hampshire School Board Association. We followed our own attorney's advice and we're still wrong. So what would I do? I would do my best to maintain the current standards which have been set for this board, which no other board has been held to. That's what I do.
Henry?
Well, riding on what Jim just said, past boards have violated the right to know. They just haven't been called on the carpet. And I think that the case that we're, the two cases that we're involved with, they are cases that were honest mistakes made. We, we're negotiating with a superintendent mutually to extrapolate him from this contract. And there was a confidentiality agreement signed by both sides, us and him. And we did not know the process to go forward, choosing a new superintendent, which was the interim superintendent we chose. But when we got to a certain point and we understood what we're going to do, we did make everything public. We had public meetings and did a selective, we put together a search committee of, of administrators along with the school board and made a decision on the interim superintendent.
Thank you, Henry. Maria?
I hate to rehash the past. A better tomorrow starts today. And I was not part of the board at this point. I make it point, or I have made it a point when being in public office to remember public. Public office, public servant, public education, public is what I strive for. So transparency, openness, and do I promise I'll never make a mistake? And I, I can't, but I hope somebody catches me at it and if I do, I'll apologize for it.
Thank you, Maria. Tom?
First, I'm, would be, if Maria is elected to the board, I think her experience working with this law will be of great value to the committee. And I'd just like to say, I did, I'm not a lawyer. I did read the judge's ruling and it's, it seemed to me, just reading that ruling of the first case, that it was just violation after violation after violation and that it's, it seemed like they were making, the committee was making up the rules as they go. And I, I just think that, that can't happen going forward. So I, I think as we move forward, we have to be scrupulously careful in knowing that law and obeying that law.
Thank you. Tom, Peter?
I'm a strong believer that the public should know everything that government officials, elected officials do. There should be no secrecy as what we as school board members do. And if I'm elected to the school board, I can guarantee you, even if the school board tells me I can't divulge something, if a voter asks me a question, I will answer it truthfully. To sit in front of the public, the people that you're representing, and say something is an ongoing case and you can't tell the truth, the truth can hurt the case. So if the school board members are telling the truth, they should be allowed to sit here and tell you exactly what is happening and what the school board did. The right to know law is the law and you, as the voters, have a right to know everything we do and nothing will be hidden if I'm on the school board. And I can guarantee you that.
Thank you, Peter. Al?
Boy, this is a question I've really thought a lot about recently. I'm not a lawyer. I'm an educator, so I'm going to take it from that standpoint. And, and in that light, there was an amazing amount of change that occurred in a really short period of time. You had a principal leaving, you had a failed principal search, you had a superintendent buyout, and you had your director of curriculum all left within a very short period of time. And that is a lot of change. Irrespective of the details of the buyout clause and all that kind of stuff, you, you have to tell the public what's going on. You have to at least give them some idea of what's happened and what direction we're going in. If you don't, you get to see what we're at now. And that is, people begin to question, well, are they doing something behind doors? What's going on? Where, why, why are we spending $185,000? What exactly is going on? And the longer that you don't address that, the more that that snowballs. And lawsuits, you know, huge brouhaha's on TV, all that comes out of failing to adequately communicate. So my thought is, one, in the future, we have to do a better job of explaining what we're doing. And the second is, what's become very obvious to me, is the devil is in the details. I mean, posting meetings, 72 hours and all those things which I'm not familiar with right now, I'm sure I'm going to have to become familiar with because not following those procedures, while it seems to be a small thing or a small slip up, can really catch up to you in the end. Thanks.
Thank you, Ed.
I understand there's a lot to learn with the right to lo- to know law. In fact, there's a, one of the first thing the, the board does is spend, spend an evening going over right to know. So I'm very concerned about following those laws as, as closely as I can and learning them well and following the board's code of ethics. Thanks.
Thank you. Next question goes to Henry and the question goes like this. One of the board's major jobs is negotiating union contracts. Can you tell us of your experience in this area and is there anything in your background that would recuse you from such?
No, I don't have anything in my background that would recluse me, but I do have experience negotiating contracts with Teamsters. I've worked for a corporation that had Teamsters and I was on the committee to negotiate the contract. I've negotiated the teachers' contract along with Jennifer Reeve and Joanne Portolupi and I thought that was a fair negotiation. I supported that agreement with the teachers. And this year, we had two negotiating teams that we had to deal with and I think that, that was fair and I encourage all voters to vote for the, the Warren articles to support those two agreements. But I think that, that there should be a, I think the board has to support the negotiating team. If they come to fair negotiations and, that I, that we have had in the past, I think that the board has to support that and I think they have. Thank you.
Oh, me. In Kittery, I was on the negotiating team once, on the town council, and several times during the 11 years that I spent on the school committee. I think one contract did go to mediation because we came to a standstill. Otherwise, they moved smoothly forward and were voted on. And I assume everybody was happy, but it's a tough process because there are, you're talking with your friends. It's very difficult. Thank you.
So the question was, is there anything in my background that would recuse me? Nothing that I would know of. The, I have not negotiated a contract. I, I'm a member of the union at the University of New Hampshire, so I'm familiar with some of the issues that come up in contract negotiations. And clearly one issue that will come up are, are health benefits, the cost of, the increasing cost of health benefits and, you know, the proportion that's, that the employee pays for that. So I would assume that that would be the issue that would come up, but I have not negotiated a contract, no.
Peter?
There is nothing in my background to recuse me from negotiating a contract and I've never negotiated a union contract, but I have negotiated a lot of contracts and I understand the process. And it does not bother me to negotiate and stand for what I believe in or what the voters believe in when I'm negotiating a contract. As a school board member, it, it would be up to the school board members each to decide in their own mind if the negotiated contract represents what their voters put them on the school board to represent. And that's exactly what I would do. I would look at the negotiated contract as a school board member if I was not on the negotiating board and I'd decide if it was in the best interest of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Well, I've been in two unions in my life. The first one was the American Meat Packer Union during an unfortunate summer employment and I don't think that's going to come into play anywhere in this school contract. And the second one, I was on the teachers' union in suburban Chicago, so I have a pretty good idea of what negotiations are like. I think that what, the thorniest issue going forward is going to be teacher evaluations. If you look at the New York Times or anywhere else, you're beginning to see like tying evaluations to standardized testing as well as bringing in like a third-party outside observers. So there, there's some thorny issues moving forward in how we actually evaluate teachers. And do I think that would recuse me because I was in the teachers' union? No. I think now I have a good idea of what it's like, you know, to be a community member and a taxpayer as well as a parent, to kind of counteract my, you know, experience as a teacher. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
I don't have it, any experience with union contracts and negotiations and I think that's going to be a, a big learning step for me. Thank you.
I've never been part of a union in my entire life. Most of my life I've been self-employed. However, I would have to recuse myself from a negotiating team because of my relationship with my wife, who happens to be on the board of directors of the Dover Teachers' Union part of NEA.
Thank you. I got one question left. We have time, probably one more. If there's someone out there that, just piece of paper, pen, just write it down and we'll ask that last question, whoever gets it up next. Okay. And what we'll do is, it's time to think about it. You'll have a one minute for a closing statement. Okay, here's a question. And who's going to start that will be Maria. Thank you. Please tell us your views on budgeting and budget process as a school board member.
We have to start looking at everything and make sure that we spend smart. I'm not that familiar with the budget process here, but I would like to see more, or maybe I missed them. A budget presentation, school by school, before the budget gets put together as a whole, so that the board is well informed as to the needs and going, going ons in each school, to make sure that we get an overall picture, not just numbers. Then I feel it is the board's responsibility to set a vision for what we want to see the budget accomplish, which talks about excellence and performance and curriculum, not just bottom-line numbers. I know that, that when it comes down to a crunch, which I'm at...
Thank you, Maria. Tom?
I would see the, the board as setting some targets as far as where, what a budget should end up at. And I would like to see the leadership team work together creatively to see how those targets, targets might be met. I think we're going to go through a period of declining enrollment and I think we're going to have to think creatively and hopefully the leadership team think creatively about what might happen when somebody retires, that we can't automatically think, okay, we're going to replace that person because, and maintain the status quo. I think we're going to have to think about, are there other ways we could accommodate the, the goals of education, perhaps with less staff in certain areas? I think those, I think those are going to be incredibly difficult decisions that the board is going to have to, to address. It's, I think it's easier in times of expansion. It's easier in times when the economy is going great. So I think that we're going to have to, to look at how we can maybe meet our goals in some cases with, with less staffing or fewer teachers, given the declining enrollment. I see that as the key thing coming, coming our way.
Thank you, Peter.
We got one of the finest schools in the state and that, that we have to give credit to the community for the willingness over the years to build a good school and the participation of the community in the school. But now the economy's falling apart and we're in desperate times and we have to look at our budget and we have to decide not to cut the education, but find ways to stop spending excess amounts of money. And in the budget process, that's something that we all have to look at. We all have to agree, well, we're not all going to agree with it, but we're going to have to accept it and we're going to have to find ways to continue to keep the education level as high as it is by spending less money. And that, to me, is what the budget is. It's a time to sit down and think of how you're going to spend your money in the best way, but not spend excess amounts because you have it or you don't have it. It's to use what you've got in the best way you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
I said it before, that we really need to get to know our academics because I've heard mention the declining enrollment in the elementary grades, but when you look at our special ed model, which is response intervention, there really exists a sweet spot, a window there around third grade, where not only can we boost, you know, a little bit, the grading level, but the goal is to actually get them to grade level. And if you cut funds from somewhere like that, the downstream of that is actually going to be more expensive. And that's just one example. So getting to know where we are academically, where those sweet spots are that we can apply resources and get the maximum bang for the buck, is what we really need to do to start off with. And I think that's it. Thanks.
I think that, I agree with the other panelists, that there is, this is a tough time for the budget and especially in face of projected declining enrollment. I see the board as, a major part of the board is, is working with administration and the superintendent to give directives to what they would like to keep the budget at. And at this point, it seems to me that it's probably conceivable to keep a, a budget with a zero increase and start from there, since, is my understanding, the budget has increased every year. Thank you.
We, we're charged with being the stewards of the public funds. And as I pointed out, the ideal situation would be to keep a budget flat where there's no increase in it. However, this year, even when we tried to put in a $500,000 decrease in the budget, taxes would have still gone up. Something else too, I, I think we need to get into the habit of spending it like it was our own money. And I don't know if any of you have had, ever had to fire people. I have, I, I have. I had to. It's an agonizing, terrible thing to do. I've had to put families out of, out of work. I don't want to be the guy that gives any teacher, any staff member a pink slip, but I would hope that we can work together and through attrition, through attrition and some flexibility in where we work within the school district to reduce staff should we have to in that manner. Thank you.
Henry?
Could you repeat the question again? Yep, sure. Yep, sure. One of the board's major jobs... Oh, nope. Hang on. That was his last one. Sorry, I don't want to let you guys down. I do this every year. Please tell us your views on budgeting and budget process as a school board member.
The, I think one of the biggest things that the school board has to do is budget. They have to be involved in the budget for the district. In the past, this year was no different. We started with certain goals, probably in June, I think it was, that we wanted to give to the leadership team. And part of that goal was to have a flat budget. Part of the reason for the flat budget, my thinking anyways, was the fact that two years ago, we gave back $2.2 billion of over-budgeted money. Last year, we gave back $1,006,000 of over-budgeted money. And this year, it looks like we're going to give back $1 million of over-budgeted money. And there's certain reasons why there's over-budgeting, and some of it can't be helped. But I think because of the amount of money we've given back, I think that the board members decided that having a flat budget was something that could be achieved and it would help the taxpayers who fund all of this. And I think that we've heard about attrition of different staff members. And I think that we tried that for over two years. And it failed because we went ahead and hired the same people for the positions. And so we didn't get the value of it.
Henry, thank you. While the candidates are formulating their one-minute closing statement, and we'll start with Peter and work our way down to Al because the opening was this way. I just want to remind everybody that you can vote. There's seven candidates up here, and there's four positions. There's an At-Large position, a Durham, a Lee, and a Madbury. And regardless of which town you live in, you're allowed to vote for all of those positions. And I do want to thank our timekeeper, the Maharamit PTO Chair, right down the front seat, keeping everyone on track here, keeping the meeting rolling. And what we'll do is we'll now do our closing statement. We'll start with Peter.
Like I said, I want to show the kids, and like I told them at the forum earlier today, getting involved in the community, being willing to volunteer and help people, going on to the school boards, or expressing your opinion openly, and don't be afraid of what you've got to say. That is how we make a better community. And as a school board member, I hope I can set an example for the students by talking to them and by listening to them to make us have a better community and a better, the students have a better education. Because communication is the most important part. And listening is a strong part of communication. And that's what I would do as a school board member. I will listen to you, and I will hide no facts from you. Anything that happens on the school board when I'm a member will be public information. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll close with the same story I closed with this morning. It's about a time I was just sitting beside Roger Ritfo, who was the dean of Health and Human Services, somebody who may remember Roger, at the dairy bar when they still had food like grilled cheese sandwiches. And I knew Roger was a minor league hockey referee. And I asked him, I said, "Did being a minor league hockey referee help you to become a dean?" And I thought it was just kind of a smart, elegant question, he needed to give me a smart answer. But he pauses and says, "It did. Because when you're a good referee, when you do the job well, people don't notice you." And I don't think the analogy is exactly the same, but I don't think, I hope going forward, the school board is not the story. I think if we're doing our job well, the story will be the kids, the programs, the great things going on. And that, maybe going back to Captain Balance, I think we've lost our balance a little bit in the last year and a half, and we have to get it back.
Maria?
Okay. If you vote for me, I promise to work for excellence in my own work as well as for the whole district. I will act with civility and courtesy, and I will adhere to the law, and I will follow all of the board's policies. I promise to use my experience to contribute to a smooth functioning meeting. I know the Robert's rules. And I will answer all questions that the law permits, anywhere, anytime. You can call me, you can email me, you can stop me on the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry.
I would solicit your vote. I've been on the board for three years. I've gone to every single school board meeting except for two for seven years in a row. I'm quite, I think I'm quite knowledgeable at the different subjects that we have to face every day, every meeting. I think that we've named some very good people to the administration of the schools. We're starting with Todd Allen, the director of special education, the director of athletics in the high school. And now we've picked a very good superintendent. And I think that we're going to continue along the same lines. And I would like to solicit your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a tough 18 months. I volunteered for this board initially because they couldn't find anybody else from Madbury to do it. And I figured, well, what the heck, I coached soccer, and I was involved with the community. In fact, I was even volunteering for this community before I moved to this community. And when I realized how much time it took to do this job, that's what prompted my going into retirement. So what am I looking for? What do I want to do? I want to deliver a high value to the Oyster River taxpayers, residents and the children. Provide Oyster River students with real-life learning opportunities. That's why I'm so, I'm so much attuned to vocational training and making them aware of the possibilities that they can have a successful and happy life through ways other than academia. I want to support my fellow board members as an active team player. And most important, with the company of Dr. Morris, I want very, very much to work with him and support him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since I've decided to run for the board, I've had a wonderful experience meeting administrators, teachers, community members. And I'm always struck most by everybody's enthusiasm. I'm, people seem very dedicated to their jobs and the goal of making Oyster River the best school system out there. And I think that my hope is that, as a member of the school board, I can lend my knowledge and experience to help continue that enthusiasm. And I think I've got a set of skills that make me especially good at listening to other people and help make balanced and meaningful decisions. Thank you.
Well, I keep thinking of this Realtors term, that this district has great bones. And by that, I mean, we have experienced teachers that are really dedicated. We have parents that are engaged and do amazing things. We have a great set of administrators working. And I can't even tell you how impressed I am with the kids in our district. They put on this forum themselves earlier today. What we really need is just the ability to tie ourselves together, build ourselves back up as a community, and move forward. And I would hope that my experiences as, you know, an educator, as a parent, and also a taxpayer, can help me blend together some experiences to help us achieve that goal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone for coming to here tonight. And once again, thank Maharamit PTO for sponsoring this and the school district for setting this all up. And especially the candidates. Four of these people up here will be on your school board after the election. Thank you.